Call to order, April eighth, twenty fourteen, six thirty P. M., Newcastle County Council Meeting. Let's stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell, Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Here.
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 Mr. Powers.
Here. Mr. Reta. Mr. Sheldon.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Street. Mr. Tackett.
Here.
Mr. Wyner.
Here.
Mr. President of the Royal Carbiels thirteen, yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any correctional amendments to the meeting for March twenty fifth, twenty fourteen? Here now is that motion for approval of amendments. Mr. Smith, I'm sorry, Mr. Smiley.
Motion to approve the minutes of the special council meeting for purposes of the budget address and the regular council meeting, both of which took place March twenty fifth, two thousand and fourteen.
I'll stand in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As having minutes of both meetings are approved. Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Any announcements for council members tonight? Councilmember Cartier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance fourteen dash zero three zero will not be introduced tonight.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Councilmember?
Yes.
Powers?
I'm here.
Councilmember Powers has joined us, Councilmember Wyner, Councilmember Smiley. Any announcements?
Yes.
Yeah, my apologies.
Yes, Mr. President, the resolution fourteen dash zero two seven and fourteen dash zero two eight will remain tabled.
Thank you, Councilmember Wyner. Councilmember Smiley?
Yes, at the appropriate time, I'll be making a motion to table R. fourteen dash zero nine three.
Thank you. Any more announcements from council members? Seeing none, we will now have introductory portances. Madam Clerk, please proceed with the introductory portances.
Ordinance fourteen zero two seven, under the plan of rates of pay for unclassified temporary seasonal and part-time recurring in Newcastle County. Substitute number one to ordinance fourteen zero two eight, amend the FY two thousand and fourteen improved operating budget per create four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to the Department of Special Services to cover the cost of snow removal. Ordinance fourteen zero two nine, amend the grant budget per create federal grant award of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars from the U. S. Department of Homeland Security to the Delaware Emergency Management Agency, D. Ma, under the Department of Safety and Homeland Security, to the Newcastle County Federal Fiscal Year two thousand and eleven Homeland Security Grant Program. Ordinance fourteen zero three one, the annual revenue ordinance of Newcastle County for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen through July one, two thousand and fourteen. Ordinance fourteen zero three two, calculation of sewer service charges effective July one, two thousand and fourteen for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Ordinance fourteen zero three three, and ordinance authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds of Newcastle County for the purpose of financing certain capital projects approved in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen for capital budget. Ordinance fourteen zero three four, the capital budget ordinance of Newcastle County for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and fourteen. Ordinance fourteen zero three five, adopt the annual operating budget of Newcastle County for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmembers Bell and Street have joined us tonight.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Reta, I'm sorry. We now have reports from select and special committees. We will start with the Finance Committee, Councilmember Cartier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, Finance Committee met at one thirty, and we had a very relatively small agenda, but I'll just briefly go through. Nothing on each consent calendar. Resolution fourteen dash zero nine three, the capital program for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and twenty, Councilman Smiley mentioned we will table that tonight pending a vote later. We had one resolution for lobbyist services in Dover, and we also have a ordinance to amend the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen operating budget revised department administration. We entertained two council requests, which were passed, and had a discussion around some expensive revenue roundtable, and adjourned the meeting after the public comment.
Thank you. Executive meeting dealt with...
Mr. Council President.
I'm sorry. Quick, quick, Councilman Smiley.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to continue with finance. The Finance Committee met Monday, March thirty first, to review the capital budget, and the Finance Committee again met on April seventh to review the executive, raw offices, and county auditor proposed FY fifteen budgets, and tomorrow at three o'clock, Finance Committee will meet to review the revenues, debt, services, and contingencies proposal for the FY fifteen budget.
Thank you, Finance Chairs. Anything else from Finance? Executive Committee, today we heard and interviewed Christine Downing for Director of H. R. She shared with us her in-depth knowledge and her vision for H. R. for the county and was received with open arms and a positive reaction from the council, boards, and commissions. We discussed new candidates and reviewed resumes. Councilmember W. had anything to add to boards and commissions?
No, I think we're good.
Good. President Protem had anything to add to executive?
I think, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety?
Thank you, Mr. President. We conducted our Public Safety Committee meeting this afternoon at three P. M., and we reviewed over, briefly reviewed over, four ordinances, three of which will be voted upon tonight for public safety. In addition, we had a presentation made by the President of the Newcastle County Volunteer Firefighters Association, Danny Burris. He had some additional personnel with him from Volunteer Hose of Middletown, as well as the Five Points Fire Company, and their presentation was on current funding that the fire service receives on a state and county level, and some of the challenges that the fire service is facing in funding and being able to sustain, especially their emergency medical services. There was further discussion, and it kind of wrapped into the presentation about House Bill number two seventy-eight. Probably not as much discussion as we would have liked to have, but due to time constraints. But there were a lot of good suggestions, a lot of good dialogue, and we culminated the meeting with President Richard Smith, from the, President of the N. W. A. C. P. from the state of Delaware, from the entire state of Delaware, was recognized, and he spoke, and while he conveyed his appreciation and utmost respect for our county volunteer fire service, he also commented on an incident that was in the paper that occurred between some firefighter personnel from Odessa and Volunteer Fire Company on a trip back from New York. And in addition to that, you know, there was some discussion on diversity in the fire service or lack thereof, as well as Co-Chairman Street, and I think he did an excellent job in presenting the fact that we not only learn from these situations, but at the same time, there needs to be a commitment for not just diversity, but education, and learning what our shortcomings are, and respect for one another, and everything, and Jay's had quite a bit of experience with this in the school system, and both Jay and I, along with Joe Bryant, are going to reach out to the President of the Firefighters Association, talk more in depth about some of the ideas and possibly a path forward in the future.
Excellent. Co-Chair, Street, no comment. Thank you. Land use?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Reta?
On Tuesday, April first, we had, we had three items on the agenda, two were resolutions which are renaming for tonight, and one was titled a subdivision for parcels for three blocks, which will be on the agenda tonight, and also we had the General Manager of Land Use, Ivy Federated, she gave an update and a presentation that lasted probably about half hour, forty-five minutes, and it was very informative, and a lot of ideas that came from the public and the council and the administration.
Thank you. Co-Chair of Land Use, you have anything to add? Councilmember Tackett?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Budget? Councilmember Smiley, anything to add to budget?
I'm one year old, he did, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to consent calendar. Councilmember Powers?
Yes, special services.
Special Services.
On April first, at one thirty on the eighth floor, was discussion of waste hauler rates, an update on projects associated with public safety building deficiencies, and an update on vacant county problems.
Thank you, I apologize for overlooking you, it wasn't my...
I kept putting my hand up.
I'm sorry. Anything else, special services? Any other committee? Great. Consent calendar. Any member of the council or public may remove an item from the consent calendar for further discussion by a simple request. An item is not removed, it will not be subject to amendment, discussion, or other objection, and will be voted upon as a package. Consent calendar items are noted on the agendas as such, published in the newspaper as well. They are available in the back of this room. Is anyone from the council or public who wishes to have an item removed at this time? Is there a motion to receive, approve the consent calendar?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As having Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Resolution fourteen zero eight, reappointing Doris McLambs in Newcastle County Leadership Commission. Resolution fourteen zero eight nine, honoring the life and legacy of Arthur Gil Conley, Jr. Resolution fourteen zero nine zero, honoring the life and legacy of Albert Lee Sacks. Resolution fourteen zero nine one, honoring the life and legacy of Tom Lattell Winslow.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll of the consent calendar.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Reta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
President of the Royal Carbiels thirteen, yes.
Consent calendar has been passed, we move now to presentations. Any member of council wish to make a presentation, Councilmember Della?
Yes, I move that resolution fourteen zero nine seven be read out of order and placed before council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it.
Resolution fourteen zero nine seven, congratulating William Phil Wheatley on his retirement and thanking him for years of service to Newcastle County.
Councilmember Della?
Yes, if there was a Renaissance man who dealt with public service and public safety, it would be Bill Wheatley, and many of you have worked with Bill, but the fifth district is lucky enough to have him reside within our borders. Bill has decided to move on to do some different things. We hope he travels and fishes and does wonderful things, but we will remind him that we know where he lives, and we know where to find him when we need him. Bill has done many things. He has held leadership roles, he is a vet, he has served our country very proudly in both the Korean and Vietnam wars. He has served in leadership positions in his own community, Brookside, and many committee positions there. He has been a faithful member of the Western District Advisory Committee since two thousand and two. He's received the Governor's Outstanding Volunteer Award for his work in public safety, and he's the founder of the Crime Prevention Area Watch. I cannot say what a great thing it's been to work with this guy, he's a wonderful human being, and I have to say, Dave, that's why I wanted the little K section of Brookside during the districting. But at any rate, I am joined by Councilwoman Kilpatrick and Councilman Dave Tackett in this resolution, and I'd like, if Mr. Wheatley could come forward and our council members, I would love to be able to present it to him.
Councilmember Della, let's vote this in on record, and then we will honor him.
I'm excited about this.
Any comments or questions in council?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember Tackett?
I too will offer a few brief comments, as maybe in a few minutes we'll have, hopefully Bill can share too, but I did have the distinct pleasure of working with Bill, who I consider a friend and a brother. Bill has just been instrumental in the crime area watch, organizing communities, his volunteerism for years has just been unsurpassed, and the value he has added to the community in our area has just been instrumental in getting many, many programs up and running, the acknowledgement he's always given to police and the services he's always provided them, showing up at many hours with cookie runs and hot dog days and all kinds of stuff, Bill, that's going over there, and the acknowledgement has just been unbelievable of the amount of services went above and beyond. Here is just a volunteer in the community, and again, I cherish our friendship.
Thank you. Councilmember Kilpatrick?
Thank you. I know that it's a strange positioning of our district for me to be on this resolution as a co-sponsor, but when I worked for the House of Representatives, Bill was in Representative Oberlees District, and because I worked that district, we worked many, many hours together. Bill was one of the people on speed dial, that when you needed help with something, you knew that he was always there.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Public comment? Close now, closed. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Reta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
President of the Royal Carbiels thirteen, yes.
R. fourteen dash zero nine seven is approved. Now you may honor him.
Mr. Wheatley, come on down.
And Dave and Janet, and I know there's been others who have worked with Mr. Wheatley, if you would like to come up and be a part of this. Bill?
All right, Bill.
And he knows where you live, too.
I'm scared.
Yes, we all do. So, what can we say? You have just been a stalwart in all of this. We are so thankful for all your work, and we just want you to have fun in your retirement and enjoy doing those things that you like to do.
I appreciate it, thank you. Just talk.
Would you want to say anything?
Couple minutes? Okay. Figure out. Comes a time in everybody's life, I guess, when you have to face reality, and it hit me. It took a brick wall to hit me, but it hit me, and I don't want to quit what I was doing. I eat, sleep, and drink, helping people and my community, and I just hope I made a small difference in that area that I'm from, and if you would, I just, if it wasn't for you good folks behind me, and all the volunteers that worked with me, they're the ones that deserve that, but I'm the one that's getting it, and for that, I appreciate it, but I just want to leave you with something that's very close to my philosophy. We make a living by what we earn, but we make a life by what we give, and having that shared, you folks are fantastic. Thank you very, very much. Can he have the plaque?
Yep. Come, come, come. (INAUDIBLE).
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 Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill, give him another hand, thank you. Thank you, Bill. (APPLAUSE). Need motion to return to record order business?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
As having agenda item H, consideration of resolutions removed from the consent calendar, and other resolutions, R. fourteen dash zero nine two. Mr. Tackett?
Thank you, Mr. President, I remove the resolution be read by title only and placed before council for consideration and adoption.
Second. Resolution fourteen zero nine two, plan of Pleasant Valley Crossing, ten to your hundred, south side of U. S. B. Forty, at Pleasant Valley, where there is total subdivision of parts under three lots, and the proposed construction of three retail buildings totaling twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-six square feet.
Mr. Tackett?
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, we discussed this up in committee, and we had the applicant come and give a presentation, this is a, will be a very good use for this area here, this is the gateway into Maryland there, our residents travel either into Maryland or they come out of Maryland into Delaware, this is going to make a very nice spot where they can stop and do some shopping, and we already have a nice gas station there and everything, so it'll be a good utilization of the already existing area there that's already zoned for this.
Thank you. Council, you have any comments or questions? Public comment?
Mr. President, if it pleases you and the council, my name is Jeffrey Ross, I'm here representing Pleasant Valley Crossing LLC, who is the applicant for this plan. We had an excellent discussion, as Councilman Tackett says, the land use committee, basically this is approximately twenty-one thousand square foot commercial project, and it would be a redevelopment ordinance project and a minor plan at that but for variance we needed, and so we think it's a very good project, it's been well thought out, certainly it's going to add some real, I think, quality opportunities for shopping in this part of our county, and certainly will help us take advantage of some of that cross-state traffic that will help our revenues. So, I'm here for questions in the interest of time, but I could make a more detailed presentation if you so wish.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Seeing the floor is now closed, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Diller?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Reta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
President of the Royal Carbiels thirteen, yes.
R. fourteen dash zero nine two is approved. R. fourteen dash zero nine three, Mr. Cartier?
Councilman Smiley, on record?
Smiley.
I request, yes, Mr. President, I request R. fourteen dash zero nine three be read by title only. Second.
Resolution fourteen zero nine three, adopting the Newcastle County capital program for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and twenty.
Councilman?
Yes, this is FY fifteen budget item, we will be voting later, I make a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Table it is. R. fourteen dash zero nine three is tabled. R. fourteen dash zero nine four, is this Mr. Smiley, Mr. Cartier? Mr. Cartier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, like resolution fourteen dash zero nine four, read by title only and placed before council for its consideration and adoption. Thank you.
Resolution fourteen zero nine four, authorizing the execution of one purchase order contract to Newcastle County Executive Office for an increase in the purchase order for lobbyist services in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes, we discussed this up in the finance, it is the twenty-four thousand dollars for lobbyist services for this part of the General Assembly this year by Mr. Jamison, our lobbyist for county government to the General Assembly.
Thank you, council, you have any comments or questions? Councilmember Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regretfully, I don't think that I can support this. I shared some of my sentiments in the council meeting today and have done a little research since then, and I believe that at this point there are too many conflicts for me to feel comfortable, knowing that there's a name associated with this contract. This is a person who is also registered as a lobbyist for the Delaware State Police, for the PAL Center, and now Newcastle County, and I'm just not sure that we get the full attention that we want, considering some of the other entities that he also lobbies for. We subsidize the PAL, Mr. Jamison is on our email system, I don't know how the conflict goes there, I have some ethics questions that I felt should be asked, and obviously there's no time to do that, but there's some ethical questions that I feel need to be answered here, considering that he is being paid, I'm going to say through PAL, but that we as a county subsidize PAL, and this would be another contract with somebody who is already making money off of a subsidized county entity.
Thank you. Councilmember Cartier?
Yes, just for the record, in the body of the resolution, the payment, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand will go to R. S. Jamison, Council to LLC.
Councilmember Tackett, Councilmember Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, I guess, you know, as Janet mentioned, I guess she can, you know, work on getting some answers to the questions, you know, perhaps later, but when I analyze this, I guess the things that jump out at me that will, to support in our, you know, our past lobbyists that I think we paid more money to, we ended up getting, having to pay more money for paramedics, and we got dog control, so I don't know what that lobbyist was down there doing, and I think this one also was instrumental in helping with the paramedic bill and the retirement in the state and also, I'm not sure of any conflicts or any of that, but I do see some value in this, and I'll be supportive of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Smiley?
Well, I've been around too long and seen too much through the state legislature to throw stones at anybody else, especially if I hadn't spent time down there and seen how it worked. That being said, while I have reservations about this, I have been giving some assurances as to the amount of time and effort that will be put in going forward, so I'm going to support it, and I just say for my own benefit, I hope I feel a lot better about this vote after this legislative session than I feel casting it this evening, and I'm going to give anybody a chance.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Street?
Yes, Mr. President, I quite frankly listened attentively to comments, especially those from Councilwoman Kilpatrick, and I think are arguments meritorious. My concern is, I understood her points about somebody being there full-time, all-time, undivided attention, and while it's a twenty-four thousand dollar question, it's only twenty-four thousand dollars, and if we want somebody to spend that kind of time and that kind of attention, I don't think the price is right. Generally, try to get something for nothing, you get nothing, so if we really serious about having a lobbyist and get somebody who's going to give their undivided attention and it's all hours, day and night, then I think it's going to take you twenty-four thousand dollars. So, I'm going to support this the way it is, but I still think that the comments and concern that relates to time are meritorious and should be considered going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Street. Any other comments, questions? Public comment? Seeing Madam Clerk, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Diller?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yeah.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Reta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yeah.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
Mr. President of the Royal Carbiels eleven, yes, one now, one at.
R. fourteen zero nine four is approved. R. fourteen dash zero nine five, Mr. Reta?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have the resolution R. fourteen dash zero nine, placed before council consideration and adoption.
Second.
Resolution fourteen zero nine five, to name a non-residential subdivision recorded as villages, the Red Clay, to the Creeks and Met Marshallton.
Mr. Reta?
Per title.
Comments, questions? Public comment? Seeing Madam Clerk, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Public comment? Seeing that Madam Clark, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Diller?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Taggert?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
President of the Royal Corbeals thirteen, yes.
R fourteen dash zero nine five is approved. R fourteen dash zero nine six, Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move that resolution one four dash zero nine six be read by title only and placed before council for its consideration and adoption.
Resolution fourteen zero nine six to name a residential subdivision recorded as Cedar Lane to the Estates of Cedar Lane.
Mr. Bell?
As per title, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmember Taggert having a comment or question?
Just, just, just a question, procedure. Um, where is this at?
This is actually, uh, on Cedar Lane Road.
Cause I have, I don't know why, but I have the resolution in my packet under my sponsorship and I don't recognize it, but it's on the agenda under yours.
Cedar Lane is between, uh, actually, uh, Boyd's Corner Road, eight ninety-six and, uh, out towards Marl Pit Road.
That is your issue?
Oh, absolutely.
Maybe we better co-sponsor.
If you like.
Would you like to co-sponsor?
Point of information, Mr. Wyner?
Yeah, I believe, uh, the rules permit a typographical error to be changed.
The clerk, you're doing the note.
Yes.
It's on her copy, correct? Any other comments or questions? Public comment? Seeing that Madam Clark, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Taggert?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
President of the Royal Corbeals thirteen, yes.
R fourteen dash zero nine six is approved. R fourteen dash zero two seven, uh, Mr. Wyner, will table in that?
Yes, uh, R fourteen zero two seven and R fourteen zero two eight will remain tabled.
Thank you. Moving on to R fourteen dash zero seven nine, I believe, uh, Councilmember Kilpatrick, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I move that R fourteen zero seven nine be removed from the table.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Councilmember?
Thank you. Um, we bring before you tonight, um, the nomination of Christine Dunning for General Manager of, um, Human Resources. She, as we discussed in, in the committee meeting today, has a, a great resume when it comes to human resources, um, some specific skill areas are staffing, training, and retention in the Wilmington Police Department, um, two thousand and one to two thousand and five, I think, if I put glasses on, two thousand and five, um, she was a Training Lieutenant in Human Resources Division, two thousand and eleven to twelve, she was the commanding officer in the Human Resources Division, she has a master's degree in Human Resources Management from Wilmington University, so it, she's been on the job for several weeks now, as we heard in the committee meeting, she has made and is looking toward some substantial changes in how we recruit, how we train, um, testing for, for employment, how we employ people, so I, I very gladly, um, move that, that we approve this tonight.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Sheldon, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, that's, as stated before, uh, we're picking, we're picking up an excellent person who can start and doesn't have to be trained at all and just can come on moving, so I think it's a great selection.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments or questions, council? Public comment? Madam Clark, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Diller?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Taggert?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
President of the Royal Corbeals thirteen, yes.
R fourteen dash zero seven nine is approved. Mr. Stanley, please stand. Congratulations. Welcome to the team. Moving on to ordinance is now, ordinance fourteen dash zero two two, I believe Mr. Smiley is at you tonight?
Yes, I would request that ordinance number fourteen dash zero two two be read by title only and placed before council for its consideration.
Right. Ordinance fourteen zero two two from FY two thousand fourteen operating budget revised Department Administration.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes, uh, this ordinance transfers two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from the tax stabilization fund to the administration, uh, for purposes of funding the law department.
Comments or questions, council? Public comment? Seeing that Madam Clark, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Diller?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Taggert?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
President of the Royal Corbeals thirteen, yes.
Ordinance fourteen dash zero two two is approved. Ordinance fourteen dash zero two three, Mr. Bell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this, uh, forty thousand five seventy-eight fifty-five, uh, comes to the Department and County, uh, through the state aid to local law enforcement, Sally funds, and will provide approximately seven hundred and ninety-six hours of police overtime, uh, which the department will focus on defined high crime area communities within our county.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Comments or questions, council? Public comment? Seeing that Madam Clark, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Diller?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Taggert?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
President of the Royal Corbeals thirteen, yes.
Ordinance fourteen dash zero two three is approved. Ordinance fourteen dash zero two four, Mr. Street?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that, uh, ordinance number fourteen dash zero two four be read by title only and placed before council for its consideration and adoption.
Second.
Ordinance fourteen zero two four, another grants budget appropriate for forty thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-five cents in state aid to local law enforcement funds from the State of Delaware Department of Public Safety to the Newcastle County Department of Public Safety, Sally FY two thousand fourteen police focused overtime grant.
Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this, uh, forty thousand five seventy-eight fifty-five, uh, comes to the Department and County, uh, through the state aid to local law enforcement, Sally funds, and will provide approximately seven hundred and ninety-six hours of police overtime, uh, which the department will focus on defined high crime area communities within our county.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Comments or questions, council? Public comment? Seeing that Madam Clark, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Diller?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Taggert?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
President of the Royal Corbeals thirteen, yes.
Ordinance fourteen dash zero two three is approved. Ordinance fourteen dash zero two four, Mr. Street?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that, uh, ordinance number fourteen dash zero two four be read by title only and placed before council for its consideration and adoption.
Second. Ordinance fourteen zero two four, another grants budget appropriate for forty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-two cents in emergency illegal drug enforcement funds from the State of Delaware Department of Public Safety to the Newcastle County Department of Public Safety's ID, EIDE FY two thousand fourteen drug investigation overtime grant.
Mr. Street?
Yes, Mr. President, we had a long meeting today, public safety, and I did not, under other, have time to commend our police department for outstanding work that was done and what was printed in the public press about the major seizure heroin and the, uh, money that was, um, also taken and also, my understanding, AK forty-seven, that was a result of, uh, police jurisdictions, working together and collaborating, and, uh, we seizure end result one of the, the largest bust ever. Um, this particular grant from the state, uh, is going to continue to assist us with this type of activity, um, certainly great for the state for having and creating this funding emergency illegal drug enforcement fund and, uh, very much needed, don't have to look any further than it's been the last week and a half when this happened to understand the importance of.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Smiley and I were there for the press conference, the public safety officials and the county executive, and it was a sight to see.
I know you all like those cameras.
Well.
Always sitting in the back.
Councilmember Wyner?
Yes, uh, I also, um, appreciate the fine work of our police department, uh, the, uh, the bus took place on a portion of my district in Lancaster Avenue, I wasn't able to be there, I have, uh, medical needs and my family that I take care of, but my office, uh, A. Lou Hinckel was there to represent me and, um, I'm appreciative of the opportunity to support this grant.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, council? Public comment? Seeing that Madam Clark, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Diller?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Taggert?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
President of the Royal Corbeals thirteen, yes.
Ordinance fourteen dash zero two four is approved. Ordinance fourteen dash zero two five, Mr. Street?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that ordinance number fourteen dash zero two five be read by title only and placed before council for its consideration and adoption.
Second. Ordinance fourteen zero two five, another grants budget appropriate for twenty-nine thousand dollars in state aid for local law enforcement funds from the State of Delaware Department of Public Safety to the Newcastle County Department of Public Safety, Sally FY two thousand fourteen police training grant.
Mr. Street?
Yes, Mr. President, this will provide, uh, twenty-nine thousand dollars in state aid and, under the Sally grant, uh, for training and, uh, you know, we always need training, we always benefit from training, so this is also is very much appreciated.
Council comments or questions? Public comment? Seeing that Madam Clark, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Diller?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Taggert?
Yes.
Mr. Wyner?
Yes.
President of the Royal Corbeals thirteen, yes.
Ordinance fourteen dash zero two five is approved. Ordinance fourteen dash zero zero three, Mr. Wyner?
Yes, Mr. President, fourteen dash zero zero three and fourteen dash zero two zero remain table pending my, uh, meeting with the county executive.
So be it. I M J time-sensitive congratulatory honorary resolutions, R fourteen dash zero nine eight, Mr. Wyner?
Yes, I ask that resolution fourteen dash zero nine eight be read by title only and placed before council for its consideration and adoption.
Resolution fourteen zero nine eight honoring the life and legacy of, of William Iskin.
Mr. Wyner?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Iskin and Mr. Iskin owned, uh, the Howard Johnson's on Conker Pike, uh, and, uh, another hotel and other interests, they were neighbors of mine and their son Donald is one of the fine members of Delaware State Bar Association, uh, sponsored a resolution earlier where past president Delaware State Bar, way too young, died sixty-one, uh, so in any event, I'm pleased to put this resolution before council for its vote.
Excellent. Comments or questions from council? Seeing, uh, public comment, seeing, uh, Madam Clark, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Diller?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.